Good afternoon. It is now 6:30, and I would ask that if you would please stand and join me for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you for this day that you've made. We thank you again for the opportunity to serve the citizens here of Henry County, and we ask for your wisdom and guidance in all that we do, all that we discuss, and all that we decide on this evening. And all that do agree, in Jesus's name, please say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening again, and we welcome you to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. We are now calling the meeting to order, and at this time, we have a couple of announcements regarding the agenda. We have a couple of planning and zoning items that were advertised, but they have been postponed by the applicant. The first planning and zoning item that has been postponed is C O M P A M 1902, John Jordan and Height Walker requesting an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan of property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway 3 and Old Griffin Road in District 2. The second planning and zoning item that has been postponed is R Z 1906, John Jordan and Height Walker requesting a rezoning from C 1 Neighborhood Commercial to M U Mixed Use for property located east of Highway 1941 and west of Old Highway 3 and Old Griffin Road in District 2. A couple of other changes to the agenda this evening. In addition to removing the two zoning cases, we will be adding a presentation by Superior Court Judge Brian O'Meara of the Superior Court Update Regarding the Fourth Judgeship and Symposium on Henry County Specialty Courts, and that's going to be added right after or right before the county manager's comments. And then, under Item 9, we're going to switch the order of the presentations regarding the Comprehensive Transportation Plan that will come prior to the Transportation Improvement Plan Discussion as printed in the agenda. Are there any other items or revisions to the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Item D, Public Hearing, R Z 1905. I would like to have that table for this meeting and placed back on the agenda for the second meeting in October.
Okay, so we've got a removal of public hearing, R Z 1905, which is General Holdings Unlimited requesting a rezoning from R A Residential Agriculture to Residential Suburban for property located northeast of the intersection of East Lake Road and Springdale Road in District 4. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. The floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda with the changes that have just been noted.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or revisions? All in favor? The modified agenda is now approved. We'll now move into the next item, which is regarding the board and authority appointments for District 1. The first one is an appointment to the zoning and advisory board, and this is for the appointment for Mr. Donald Bim to fill an unexpired term, and his appointment will begin immediately and expire on 12/31/2020. The second appointment is to the Henry County Development Authority, and this is for Mr. David Crowe for an unexpired term, and his appointment will begin immediately and expire on 12/31/2020. Are there any questions or discussions regarding these appointments? Hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion to approve both of these appointments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? The appointments are unanimously approved. As stated earlier, we're now going to invite up Superior Court Judge Brian O'Meara to give us an update on the Fourth Judgeship and the Symposium on the Henry County Specialty Courts. So, good evening, Judge.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, for this opportunity to provide you with a very brief update from Superior Court. When I was here before you in February, I asked for your permission to pursue a fourth judgeship for the Superior Court based on the fact that we have three Superior Court judges that have been doing the work of four for, really, a very long period of time. And the statistics that have come out of the Judicial Workload Assessment Committee support that conclusion and have buttressed this need. So, what's happened since February? Since February, we received a letter from all six of you unanimously supporting this fourth judgeship. We presented that to the Workload Assessment Committee and the Judicial Council, along with letters from all 10 members of our legislative delegation in support of this judgeship. And thankfully, the Judicial Council voted unanimously to support our fourth judge request. So I'm here today to share that very good information, very good news with you, number one. Number two, to thank all of you for your willingness to hear, to listen to our need, and to respond accordingly in such an appropriate and timely manner. We can't do this without you, without our Henry County Legislative Delegation, and we are very grateful, all of us who are in that Superior Court building, for your support and continued encouragement in this regard. So where do we go from here? The next step in the process is that there has to be a bill dropped at the legislature, which we anticipate will be done by perhaps all of the members of the local delegation. And thereafter, hopefully, the bill will pass and we'll have funding for this fourth judgeship, and we should know all of that by February, March, certainly by near the end of the session. I wanted to tell you that not only were we approved for this judgeship by the Judicial Council, which is chaired by Chief Justice Milton, but we were prioritized as number two in the ranking of approved judgeships. Why is this significant? There were nine judgeships that were approved. Nine circuits qualified numerically from a workload standpoint for a new judgeship. But being ranked number two means that we really have a good chance, a good shot, of actually having a bill passed and having it funded, because typically, routinely, two to three judgeships per session get funded. And so, I think we're in a pretty good position, but back in 2008, we were in second position, and because of a lack of funds at that time, unfortunately, it just didn't get all the way to the finish line. But hopefully, we're in a slightly better position now, and things will go our way. Given that we are cautiously optimistic that we are going to be getting this fourth judgeship, I've reached out to the county manager and also spoken with Angie Sorrow, who's our budget director, and staff has looked at this request, looked at our needs, not just for the judgeship, but for all of the folks that are needed to support a judgeship, the prosecutors, the defense attorneys, the investigators that work for those two agencies, the criminal clerks, the civil clerks. All of the employees are needed to do this work that is connected with this judgeship. We're modeling a financial approach to be sure that we budgeted correctly for the next budget cycle, which is the FY 2021. And I want to thank the county manager and Angie Sorrow and everybody else who's been working with them, including Mr. Smith, to make sure that we're prepared for the good news when it comes. So why not be optimistic? So that's what's happening with our fourth judgeship. Let me just switch for a second over to the last topic that I want to address, which is that we are having a celebration next Thursday, the 24th, at 7:00 p.m., right here in this room, and we'll be celebrating all of the work of all of the accountability courts that we have in Henry County. The Drug Court, the Mental Health Court, the Juvenile Mental Health Court, the Parental Accountability Court. There is a tremendous amount of good work that's being done by judges and teams that surround these judges, including by law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department. And we want to share this with the community. We're inviting the members of the public to be here, to participate, to meet the local judges that are doing this work, and also to meet our keynote speaker, who is Chief Justice Harold Milton of the Georgia Supreme Court. There's our fancy flyer. We are so grateful to Justice Milton for making himself available to come down here and to talk to us about the statewide success of accountability courts over the course of the last decade, and then we're going to be able to show you the local success that we've had in changing lives, protecting the public, saving taxpayer money, changing lives here in Henry County. So this is happening next Thursday at 7:00 p.m. right here. Again, thank you for allowing us the use of this chamber. Thank you for your support of accountability courts over the years, and I look forward to hopefully seeing one or two of you, if you can break away, to come and join us during that celebration. I guess the last thing that I want to say is a special thanks to Judge Jim Chafin, who's here with me today. Judge Chafin retired after 16 years on the state court bench, and since his retirement -- retirement, he's become a member of the Board of Directors of the National Alliance of Mental Illness. He started a diversion program for misdemeanants who are entangled in the criminal justice system because of severe and persistent mental illness, connecting them with treatment, helping them to avoid jail, helping them to avoid the emergency room, and helping the families get their arms around the problems that they present. Jim Chafin, who is a full Colonel, by the way, before he spent 16 years on our state court bench and has now turned his attention to this, is the type of dedicated public servant that I really admire and aspire to be. And so, thank you, Jim, for your time and your work. And, Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Judge, and we appreciate that update. We appreciate Judge Chafin as well. And again, it's noted that the celebration, I think, is Tuesday, the 24th versus Thursday, I think.
It's next Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, Tuesday, 27:00 p.m. Okay, and we appreciate the update regarding the fourth judgeship, and especially in the updates about the next steps.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Judge. We appreciate that update again. Okay, well, we'll now move into our county manager comments and invite up Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews to present her updates.
Good evening, Chair and Board. This evening, in lieu of me giving you all a list of things that we've been working on over the last couple of weeks, we want to recognize a special group of individuals that have recently completed our Citizens Academy. As the board is aware, the county manager's office kicked off last fall our Citizens Academy, and it's an opportunity for citizens within our community to come and learn about Henry County government. They hear from -- hear presentations not only from our county staff, but from our judicial team as well, a public safety team, and then they really give us a lot of things to think about in terms of county government. And so, this evening, they are here, they're here in the audience, and we're going to recognize the group, and then we will have one member of the class come up and give a very brief, just how they enjoyed the class, presentation to the board. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Johnson, and then we'll present some certificates.
That's it, Board. As Sherry said, we're excited to present this graduating class, our second class. Our next one will be in the spring and the fall. Our goal is to have two per year. This class is very energetic, very outspoken, and kept us on our toes the whole time. And as Sherry mentioned, it's an eighth-week process, starting from administration all the way through to the county government process. So at this time, we'll call them up and ask them, the class are lining up now, and Sherry will call them, and we'll present their certificates.
And then, Commissioners, if you don't mind, once they come up, we're going to get one group picture with you all. We have Angellette Clark, Timothy Fuller, Ernest Holmes, Jean Malone, Alan McCrary, Robert Morris, Sharon Morris. We had a lot of husbands and wives in this class. Mr. John Page, Janet Pignatory, and Mr. Patrick Pignatory, Frederick Skinner, and Patrick Truax. Well, let's give them all a round of applause, so congratulations. And then, we do have one representative from the class that's going to come and give a very brief presentation to the board, and then we'll take a picture.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to say just a few words. This was awesome. I mean, this is probably one of the best things I ever experienced in my life. I spent over 20 years in the United States Navy, serving all around the world, doing a whole lot of different things. I'd have been into different countries, and when I walked into those countries, many times, I was never presented with someone to come out and tell me about the county government or anything. I was able to come back home and set up roots here in Henry County, and I was able to experience this class. And I thank you guys. I thank Sherry, thank Brad, and all the staff members that did everything. This was awesome. I want to just say to the county commission that if y'all can, you know, make this longer, help them with it, come out sometimes, see us, talk to us, because we want to see, we want to meet you guys, we want to know how the government fully and really truly works. It is a great thing when the community and the government can connect like this. I promise you, all of us will walk away from here being able to speak to our other citizens and other friends and other family members and tell them how great this thing is, because we want to see Henry County be a great county, and this is a very great start. Y'all have a great night now.
All right, Greg, thank you. Very glad, if you will, join for the picture. We can go over there, Brad. Brad, we can go over there, right?
[inaudible]
All right. All right, one, two, three.
here, and thank you all for your dedication, because I know it's a multiple-week-long commitment, and we are glad and appreciate staff for making that happen as well to educate our citizens. So, county manager, were there any other updates at this time?
That's it.
Okay. Well, we'll now move into our consent agenda, and the following items have been listed. We have an item from Parks and Recreation, which is a resolution authorizing the chair and/or the county manager to execute the Community-Based Instruction and Vocational Training Program Agreement for 2019 and 2020 school year. We have another resolution from the Transit Department. It's a resolution accepting a contract for transportation services provided to elderly and disabled individuals through the Georgia Department of Human Services for the FY 2020 Grant 42. And then, our final consent agenda item is from Technology Services, and it's a resolution to approve payment for the new Microsoft Volume License Agreement. Are any of these items requested to be removed for further discussion by the board? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We are now open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, the consent agenda is unanimously approved. We now will invite up Sheriff Keith McBrayer, and we have a resolution to accept the Project Safe Neighborhoods grant from the North District of Georgia, and we'll allow the sheriff to make that presentation to the board.
Well, good evening, Chair Wood and all Commissioners. It's good to see you tonight. I don't come before you very often, but I do so hopefully when things are very beneficial for our county, and I think from what I'm here tonight, that this will be very beneficial. I'm here to get you to accept and sign off on this Project Safe Neighborhood grant issued by the Northern District of Georgia U.S. Attorney's Office through the Criminal Justice Criminal Coordinating Council. In 2017, I saw a great need for us to take on gangs in our county, as we were seeing a lot of gang violence occurring within our jail and gang activity throughout our county. I formed a Henry County Sheriff's Office Gang Suppression Unit. The instructions that I gave to these deputies that were assigned to this unit was to suppress gang activity. This would be done through gathering intelligence, education, and enforcement. We worked very closely with the Henry County District Attorney's Office to use the Georgia Criminal Street Gang and Terrorism Prevention Act to impose longer sentences on violent offenders. We've had a lot of help from the DA's office. We work very closely with Shavita McCamey, the Chief Assistant District Attorney. Initially, I assigned two deputies to this unit, Sergeant Robert Howell and Deputy Chris Chup. These guys do a remarkable job. They've been able to gather an unbelievable amount of information about gangs and gang members from Henry County and surrounding areas. We now have a database that they input information in on suspected gang members, and we've been able to identify hundreds of gang members in our county and have been able to make up at least 15 different gangs that they represent. Most of the information comes from our jail records and from our school resource officers who do a great job identifying these gangs, help track their criminal activity. It's estimated in the state of Georgia, we have about 77,000 known gang members. We can safely say that at any given time in our jail, we have over 100 gang members. Some of the most violent crime that we are seeing in our county are linked to these gangs. Our stakeholder partners in this grant are the Henry County Police Department and the McDonough Police Department. They've assisted with intelligence and investigative efforts against the violent crime in certain targeted areas. We have now also partnered with help from the police departments in Hampton and Locust Grove to get additional information. Since the Gang Suppression Unit began just a short time ago, our deputies have prosecuted 96 criminal street gang warrants for violation of the Georgia Criminal Street Gang and Terrorism Prevention Act. We have found that the only thing that these gang members are afraid of is longer prison terms. The Northern District of Georgia United States Attorney's Office has conducted training with the Henry County District Attorney's Office since February of last year, where local law enforcement can learn about federal statutes, federal sentencing issues, and other topics that equipped the Gang Suppression Unit to spot potential crimes that could also result in federal prosecution. The Henry County Sheriff's Office entered a memorandum of understanding with the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the Henry County Police Department, and McDonough Police Department on April 19, 2019, and applied for a Project Safe Neighborhood funding from the Northern District of Georgia U.S. Attorney's Office. In August 2019, this last month, the Henry County Sheriff's Office, through the Board of Commissioners, acting as its fiscal agent, were awarded $198,933 to hire an additional gang investigator and to provide additional equipment and supplies necessary for surveillance and investigations. This equipment will aid us in building cases for prosecution by helping match weapons used in Henry County to crimes in other counties, and improve officer safety by limiting the time it takes to test an offender for illegal narcotics. I want to thank Kimberly Monis, the Grants Administrator for Henry County, Sharon Mitchell from the Sheriff's Office, for all of their hard work on working on this grant. Also, our supporting partners that are present today, from the United States Attorney's Office, we have Assistant United States Attorney Laurel Boatwright, who is here. I'll ask her to stand. Appreciate the support that we've gotten from them. From Henry County Sheriff's Office, Chief Deputy David Foster is here, Investigator Chris Chup, Sergeant Robert Howell, y'all can stand, it's okay. Henry County District Attorney, Chief Assistant District Attorney, Shavita McCamey is here. We appreciate the work that she has done with us in conjunction with Henry County Police Department. Chief Amberman, I think, is here in the back, and McDonough Police Department Chief Dorsey, I don't know if he's here. We thank you for your time. This is 100% grant with no matching funds. I think this will make a big difference in reducing crime in our county, and I welcome any questions that you may have of me.
All right, well, very good, and we thank you for that great update, Sheriff. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, I will tell you, thank you all for keeping us safe. We love it when there's teamwork occurring across agencies, and more importantly, we love 100% grants like this. So congratulations to all that made this happen, and thank you, Sheriff, again, for all that you do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again. Okay, as we move into our next item, we're going to, again, this is where the order of items were shifted? Yes?
Yes, you need to vote.
I'm sorry?
You need to vote. Grant.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. We're out there, okay. Well, let's go make sure, before you leave, we got the vote, that's the thing, so thank you for bringing that to my attention, it sounded so good. Okay, so we've heard the presentation. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant. Do we have a motion to accept?
Second.
A second. Any further comments? All in favor? Thank you, the grant is unanimously accepted, so thank you again. Okay, now we will move into the transportation planning items, and we'll begin with the overview of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and we'll invite up Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews. And I understand that we've got some updates to be received today, so thank you.
And Mr. Johnson is going to actually present to the board a copy for each board member of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Over the last couple of months, there have been a number of conversations, not only from the board, but from the citizens regarding, how does the county determine transportation priorities? Is there a plan? Are projects just -- are staff members getting together and deciding on what our priorities are going to be, and how is that determined? And so, our staff felt that it was very important to not only provide the board with a copy of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, but to make the citizens aware that there is truly a plan that exists. In 2007, the county did its first-ever Comprehensive Transportation Plan prior to 2001. Prior to 2007, there were no transportation plans in place, priorities were just determined based on need. And so, in 2007, when the first plan was done, one of the things that staff committed to was that every five to 10 years or 10 to 15 years, there would be some form of an update. And so, what you all have is a copy of this Comprehensive Transportation Plan that was approved in 2016. What's important about this plan is not only does it identify our major infrastructure and transportation needs, but it also provides to this Board guidance in terms of how we determine major thoroughfare projects, sidewalk projects, transit projects, if planning studies need to be conducted, all of that is in this plan. Now, what I want the Board to pay more particular attention to is Appendix A, which is at the beginning of the book, because this is truly the guide in terms of how we as a staff determine how projects are going to be selected. For example, when we developed our SPOSS for project list, we went to our Comprehensive Transportation Plan and we identified those projects that were identified as high priority projects. And that's how we determine how we're going to move forward because our consultants have come in, they've studied our traffic patterns, and they've determined that these are your corridors that are going to need some attention in the next five, 10, 15 years. And so, what I want the Board to do is pay particular attention to this appendix and use it as a reference when we start talking about how we're identifying our projects. You heard me mention that not only does this plan include major projects from widening projects to arterial projects, but it also looks at intersection improvements. It tells us where we need to have sidewalks. And one of the things that was interesting about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is that it also looked at transit as an option for Henry County. In addition to our transportation plan, there was also a separate transit feasibility study that was completed, which also identified some priorities for the county. And so, again, tonight, this is just an overview for the Board, one, to make sure you all had a copy of it, but two, just so that you all can review it and make sure that if there are some priorities that we're missing and we're not following this plan, that you all can hold us accountable for making sure that we are following it. At this time, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that any of the Board Members may have.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, are there any questions for the Board? Commissioner Thomas?
Sherri, a couple of questions. I know I've been really pushing you on this and thank you for this plan. I'm going to read it, okay?
Thank you.
The next thing is, in order to, one of the things we've asked for when it was put in this budget was to have a Transportation Director. And I know that that's going to be key to us keeping this plan on the forefront of our burner to make sure we follow it, changing it, adjusting it, whatever it takes to make sure that we're addressing it on a consistent basis. How close are we to making that happen?
So, we are working, when I say we, the County Manager's Office has been working with our HR team to develop a job description for the Transportation Planner. At the last Board meeting, although I wasn't here, I was able to review the video and I understand that the Board definitely wants this person to be someone that's not only making sure that this plan is moving forward, but someone who's at the table at the state level, making sure that if there are meetings being held, the staff member is there, and then also coordinating and having some interaction with you all in terms of making sure that projects are being completed. I've been told by staff that we should have the job description completed this week and then we will begin to post that position to see if we can get some good applicants in for this role. I do want the Board to understand, because I think it's important to what question you're asking, Commissioner Thomas, right now, we do have staff members that are serving in multiple roles. We have David Simmons in our DOT Department that not only is reviewing all of the infrastructure plans that are coming in for developments, but he also represents the county at the regional level, attending all of the Atlanta Regional Commission meetings every other Friday up in Atlanta. And so, we do have individuals that are at the table, making sure that if opportunities present themselves, the staff is there, but we understand the importance of getting this position filled. It's not only critical to what your needs are, but I think it's critical to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable for making sure that this plan is not only being implemented, but we're following the plan that has been approved.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions from the Board? Okay, well, we thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I understand you're going to lead us into the next item, which is a Resolution of Support for Projects, which funding will be applied during the 2019 Transportation Improvement Program Solicitation. So, again, you're here along with David and I understand that we've got, I'm John Orr, who's here also from the Atlanta Regional Commission, so we welcome him as well.
Absolutely, and before David comes forward, I'm going to ask Mr. John Orr to come up from the Atlanta Regional Commission. Mr. Orr actually oversees the Transportation Division and I thought it would be important for the Board to get a better understanding of what we're asking you all to take action on, but also to understand the call for projects and how that process works. So, I'll give Mr. Orr an opportunity to present to the Board and then myself and Mr. Simmons will come forth to present the resolution. I do know that I've heard from a couple of Commissioners in terms of specific projects that they'd like to be considered in this list and so I certainly want to open it up and let the Board know that this is just the staff's recommendation based on our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, based on the projects that we've been working on, but it's certainly something that if the Board feels that there are other projects that should warrant some review, then we can certainly submit those as well. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Orr and then myself and Mr. Simmons will come back.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here with you, Chair Wood and the rest of the Board of Commissioners. Just want to give you a little bit of background on the Atlanta Regional Commission's, our process to help allocate funding for local needs that are submitted through an application process that we refer to as a Call for Projects. Just a little bit of background as well, at ARC, we are the Designated Metropolitan Planning Organization, you'll hear the acronym, MPO. As part of our organization, we have a policy-level committee composed of elected officials in the region, which we call the Transportation Air Quality Committee. And we're very honored that Chair Wood is the Vice Chairperson of that committee. To jump right into it, the, every two years, the Atlanta Regional Commission, based on consultation with our Board and committee members, we conduct this project solicitation to accept applications from local governments and GDOT other entities to help fund and meet transportation needs. The variety of projects are typically submitted, ranging from studies to infrastructure projects, and the variety of these federal categories you can see ultimately listed in that second set of bullets, ranging from the largest programs, the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program, to other programs that are more bicycle pedestrian oriented, such as that Transportation Alternatives Program. The application cycle for this coming solicitation is going to cover FY 2020 through 2025. The applications that typically are submitted, the first category would be what we refer to as studies. That's special studies, like if there's a planning need in a community, the ARC can help provide some funding support. One thing I should note with all federal programs, there's at least a 20% match with these. Also, the bulk of the applications and projects that are submitted are within the second category, which is going to be infrastructure applications. These run the gamut of widening roads, fixing intersections, building sidewalks, and this is by far the largest category of projects that we receive. Wanted to also note on that last column is that for smaller scale projects, we work with local government staffs, that we don't require a formal application for those, they can just be submitted through the ARC Planet is the name of our online system that we use to manage project costs for existing projects that are less than $2 million. Now, to get right to it, a couple of important dates in this application cycle are coming up. We opened the application cycle back in August and of course, the deadline to receive in applications is October the 11th, so it'll be coming up on us relatively quickly. Another item I did want to stress as well is that the goal is to be working with the leadership at ARC, our region's elected officials, and bring recommendations to them the first quarter of next year, ultimately being able to get these projects in the Transportation Improvement Program. I did want to note about the Transportation Improvement Program that that is a federally required document. All federal funds that are really spent in the entire Atlanta region, whether it's ARC federal funds or GDOT, they have to be included in this Transportation Improvement Program, which we refer to as the TIP, the T-I-P. And ultimately, that has to be approved by our Policy Board and the Transportation Air Quality Committee that ultimately goes for final approval for the Governor, actually goes to the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority as well. So, in closing, I did want to just make a couple of comments, is that how much, I know at ARC, we enjoy working with the team here at Henry County, Ms. Matthews and the rest of the staff do a great job looking out for your interest over at the Atlanta Regional Commission. Great to work with, very responsive, so look forward to seeing applications come in from the county as well. And then also, I did want to thank you Chair Wood, who's a true leader at ARC and helps really represent your interest, of course, at ARC as well. So, Chair Wood, that covers my comments and we'll be glad to turn it back over to you or tackle any questions.
Okay, so you've heard this presentation from the Atlanta Regional Commission, are there any questions regarding the TIP Solicitation Process?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Tom. Okay, Commissioner Thomas has a question for Sherri.
Thank you, sir. My question, the resolution that's before us, it has a list of six items that were being considered for the TIP, correct?
That is correct, those are six recommendations from staff.
Okay. And am I correct that this is the only thing that would be recommended, will not be adjusted, doesn't include anything else?
No, ma'am, that is why we're bringing it to the Board. These are the recommendations that staff, in their review of our Comprehensive Transportation, in their review of any SPOSS projects, well, not SPOSS projects, I take that back, in review of our Comprehensive Transportation Plan, we feel that we can get funding for. Now, I will tell the Board that there was an oversight because there was one additional project in District Five that we submitted last year that did not receive funding, that should have been included in this list as well. And so, I'll present that to the Board and then I've heard from Commissioner Holmes on one other project that he would like to be considered. But this is an opportunity for the Board, if there are any other projects that you all feel warrant federal funding, that we will develop an application and submit the necessary paperwork. Now, one thing I do want to tell the Board, and David can make his way this way, is that the max amount that has been awarded for a number of the projects is about $6 million. And so, when we start talking about projects, if we're looking at large-scale projects, we may have to ask for funding for particular phases, maybe just for preliminary engineering, for preliminary right-of-way. But we also need to be reminded that whatever we submit, if we are awarded, then we will have to commit that 20% match. And so, Commissioner Thomas, if there are projects that you feel need to be considered, this is an opportunity for you to tell us, those are the projects that you all want, you would like for us to submit an application on.
When you say $6 million, is that per project or overall?
That would be per project, David? Yes, per project, yes, ma'am.
Basically, max.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Barron.
Yes, Sherri, I must tell you, I'm a little disappointed. Generally, when we go through this process, staff usually reaches out to the Board for recommendations in their district. And, you know, when I looked on the agenda and saw the projects that were on the list, nobody called me to ask me any questions. I mean, we all know our districts better than staff knows our districts, we know the needs of our district. So, you know, I did submit a couple of other projects, I think Flipping Road from North Henry to Hudson Bridge is a very important project. We have a number of developments that are happening in that particular area and widening the four lanes with sidewalks and streetlights is going to be very important for the future. And also, we've been talking about the East Atlanta Road-Rock Quarry connection, connecting Rock Quarry and East Atlanta, which ties the northern end of the county to the area where the hospital is. If there is an issue, an emergency issue in North Henry County, i.e. Fairview Community, and an ambulance picks a potential patient up in that particular area and there's a train running and East Atlanta Road is backed up from North Henry Boulevard, the patient's going to pass. So, there needs to be access directly to Rock Quarry Road from East Atlanta and we've been talking about this project for years and we haven't seen anything, any funding for that particular project. So, both of these projects are very important, not just to my district, but to the entire county and I hope that you can have them added to the list.
And Commissioner Holmes, if I may, the Rock Quarry Road project is the project that I alluded, that that should have been included in the project list. One of the things that we've done, and Commissioner Holmes, I think you can speak to it, we did submit to the Atlanta Regional Commission for TAP funding for that particular project and we haven't been successful in getting funding awarded for it. One of the things that I know that ARC looks for, those regionally significant projects that are not only going to have a benefit on local traffic, but on regional travel. And so, sometimes it's hard to compete with the other groups that may have bigger projects. We're not ignoring that project. One of the things that we are doing differently is that we are bringing this list to the Board because in the past, we've pulled the projects from our Comprehensive Transportation Plan and not solicited that support or that approval from the Board, but it's my understanding this year, not only do we have to have approval from the Boards, but if we're doing anything on a state route, we also have to have a letter of support from the Georgia Department of Transportation. I think the staff has done a great job at looking at the projects, but again, there may be projects that you all feel are near and dear to moving traffic within the respective districts and when our staff looks at developing the project list, we're looking at those projects that are part of the CTP. We recognize that Rock Quarry Road needs to be included and we will include that and then I think in addition to that, you mentioned the Flipping Road.
Both of those projects are major arterials.
Understand, and I think we agree on that.
East Atlanta Road in the morning and in the evening and also the flow from Walt Stevens and North Henry Boulevard on to Flipping Road, those streets are overwhelmed and we need something to happen immediately in those particular areas.
Absolutely. We will, again, add those two projects, if it is the will of the Board, to add those two projects for consideration. One thing I do want to remind the Board is that when we do seek federal funding, we have to follow the federal process. And so, sometimes it's a little bit longer when we are dealing with federal projects because we have the environmental section, the environmental portion that's required as well. So, if you've noticed, there may be projects that are listed that may either be in our SPOSS program or may not be in the SPOSS program, and if we already have a project, that we've already have a concept approved, we will not request federal funding for those projects because then we'll have to start over. And so, that's why if you see something listed that may be one of your SPOSS projects or you don't see something listed that may be one of your SPOSS projects, it may be because we're much farther along in the process and we don't want to start over.
Anything else, Commissioner Holmes? Anything else, Commissioner Holmes?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Barron?
Yes, Sherri, I'd like for McDonough Parkway to be considered. That's that project from 42 over to 155 and, you know, we had that set up and sponged and I think the estimated cost was about $8 million and I think we got about $1.5 million appropriated for that, so that put us in the $6 million range. And what this connector does, it actually connects 20 to State Route 155, back to State Route 42 and then Jonesboro Road and back to 2081. And what we're doing out here now in District One, it connects us back to 155 and back around to 20, so it actually gives us a bypass all the way around the city of McDonough and I think it would be great to move traffic around.
So noted, and I will make sure we add that one as well.
Okay, any other questions from or comments? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Sherri, can you tell me?
Then we'll come to Commissioner Wilson.
Which projects were listed on the TIP request the last time and that have been taken off this time? Because there were some other things on here that's not on here.
On the, good evening Chairman Board. On the 27 TIP Solicitation, we asked for money for right-of-way funding on Rock Quarry, right-of-way funding on 81 East of McDonough, which is now known as Phase One. We asked for, I think, funding on Bill Gardner Parkway didn't get awarded anything there. We asked for funding on Rock Quarry Extension and East Atlanta is a combo, we did not get any funding there. And we asked- And we asked for funding on Jodico West of 75 and we did not get any funding there.
So, my concern is that there were several projects, like Commissioner Holmes just said, that were on there that didn't make it back on there. I don't think we should take anything off, let them tell us no. But I think that everything that was on there the last time should be added back on there. You've got some new stuff on there and let the A R C decide. But we don't put something out there and then give up. We keep putting it out there until they determine that it's not going to be out there. So, I would like to see that Jodico West of 75 back on there and any other projects that were on there before. The Flipping Road should not stop at Hudson Bridge. That's something that has also been talked about over the years for the county, that Flipping Road will go all the way up through Jonesboro Road. And so, I would like to see the extension of that.
And one thing, and I think Sherry mentioned it, with the federal process, the first money we got awarded on Rock Quarry and 81 was 2015, that was for engineering. We got some right of way money in 17, it's 19 now. We're looking possibly for construction money, but I just want to make the point, a lot, federal projects typically, these road widenings run six, eight years in length from when you start to when you start construction, when you start engineering to when you get around to construction. One thing A R C does put out there is possibly doing scoping studies, and which we talked about. And the, and what I wanted to do tonight is put some things out in front of you guys because the intent was to come back on October 1st. One, for you guys have to pass a resolution of a funding commitment on the match. And I also thought we'd try and handle some of the cleanup that came from this meeting on the October 1 meeting.
And also, just for Commissioner Barron on the McDonough Parkway, staff is telling me that the reason we did not include McDonough Parkway is because we've already purchased right of way, so we're in the construction phase. We don't want to apply for federal funding because then we'll have to start over with the project, which is why that project was not listed as one of the projects. So, we are in, we're too far along in the project to now ask for that federal funding.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons still has the floor.
Gary, did you, Commissioner Barron, did you say something about Bill Gardner? Did anybody mention Bill Gardner?
Uh, no.
Okay, okay. Yeah, so Bill Gardner Parkway is another area that we need to definitely look at. But I'll let Commissioner Wilson talk a little bit about it.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I was going to speak of the, the four lane and Bill Gardner Parkway from 75 to 155. We put it on the last list. And I think that's been on the list for probably a number of years. It was on the greater list at one time and we had some funding there and I think it got pulled. So, that's, that's kind of been on the, I'm going to say 10, 12 years or more. And another thing, Sherry, you said that if we got projects this far along, that we don't need to consider on the tip. So, we got the interchange, is it too far along to even go back for the tip? And if we go for the tip for that, is that going to back us up? And that, would that slow us down? Because we are only a couple of steps away from being shovel ready for that project.
Interchange is following federal process.
So, the interchange would fall under the federal process, so we'd have to go through that federal process anyway. Now, in terms of being far along, we haven't done anything with it. The only thing that we've done at this point is we've had the feasibility study completed. And one of the things that the A R C staff did recommend to our staff is possibly putting funding in the tip for scoping for the interchange.
But will we have to back up and start over, or we'll just pick up from where we're now?
That is correct. You wouldn't start over. That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I'm glad to hear that we're allowing the commissioners to each have some comments and recommendations. And I think that you're right, as we continue to look at the comprehensive transportation plan, I'm glad that we are following the actions of the plan, and so, that's good news. I also would say that I still believe that this interchange is something that needs to be included, at least for the design and environmental studies. And I know the last time that that resolution was introduced to the board to move forward, there were some concerns of using, you know, S P L O S dollars for that. But this would be a great opportunity to apply for potential federal funding to allow the interchange at least to get to the next steps, but at the same time, free up some money locally to go to go to these projects that we're talking about as well. So, however, that can be pulled together or discussed, I'd like that to be considered as well. Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, what other questions that you may have for the board?
If not, I would like to give Mr. Simmons an opportunity to go through the project list and then we want to make sure for clarification that we have everything included. And if there are any projects on this list that the board is not in support of, to make us aware of it. What we don't want to do, it is a very tedious process to complete the applications and we want to make sure that we are completing the applications for the projects the board wants to consider. I don't want to steal Mr. Simmons' thunder, but you will notice that there are some resurfacing projects that are listed in the project list as well. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Simmons and then we will recap in terms of all of the projects that we want to include.
Okay, again, this was, tonight is for a B O C resolution of support for projects. And as I mentioned, we'd have to come back on the October 1 meeting as in a follow-up for a commitment of funding for whatever we go forward with because A R C wants to know the county can back it up if we ask for it. So, I'll just read from this. "The Atlanta Regional Commission announced a call for projects to allow local jurisdictions to apply for federal funding for local transportation improvements through the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program. A R C requires local commitment of matching funds in the amount of 20% of the amount of funding received. Staff request, the Board of Commissioners authorize for the applications for the federal funding for the following projects and phases. Highway 81 widening, also A R C code number H E dash 005, Phase One. That's east of Lemon Street to the North Bethany, South Bethany Road area. That is, what we're looking for there is construction funding, and I'll come back to that in just a moment. Add, and that's one we've gotten engineering and right of way money on in the past. One of the reasons there is a Phase Two, that'll be the next, I'll skip down to it. Phase Two is, we're asking for 81, from North Bethany, South Bethany intersection, eastward to Keys Ferry for engineering funding. And that has a lot to do with during the project that S P L O S says going. With federal money, logical termini comes into play. And basically, the feds say you can't end it at Bethany, you've got to keep pushing it. And basically, the, the point that it needs to get pushed to eventually is, is out around the Keys Ferry intersection. So, that's why we're asking for engineering money for Phase Two. Rock Quarry Road widening is one we've gotten engineering and right of way funding on in 15 and 17 tip solicitation respectively, looking for construction phase funding for that. And I'm going to hit on those two right quick. The, the maximum award is going to be that six, seven, eight million, and not to say we'd get that. I'm going to tell you that the 81 widening construction for Phase One and the Rock Quarry for the whole thing, construction will be where 8 million is not even close to 80% of the cost. So, there'll be a lot of extra money outside of what we get that will basically need to be guaranteed or backed by the county. We can potentially, three or four years from now, go and ask for more, but I, you know, there's no guarantee on that. I'll move down to Jonesboro Road. In 2017, one thing I noted, a county, one county asked for asset management resurfacing money. And that's one place where you can use federal money and use it relatively quickly versus waiting on a couple of years for engineering, a couple of, three years for right of way, several years for construction, and two, you're finished. If you're not doing any right of way work, the federal money can be spent more quickly. So, I threw in some resurfacing projects, and one of them's Jonesboro, Jonesboro Road. And I'm going to change that from Mount Olive to, from, to Mount Olive instead of Chambers. So, from Mount Olive to the Clayton County line, that's for roadway resurfacing, including base improvements, and we're going to just ask for construction money on that. One of the reasons I put that in there is because Jonesboro Road was a G DOT project, it had federal money in it, and they removed the federal money because federal money was making the project just keep growing and growing in cost. So, they now have it programmed out into 2035. Well, the road's got to last until then and it's not in greatest shape. So, I thought we could ask for improvements to the road for resurfacing, maybe some base improvements to that road to try and get it where it's a better road until it can be widened. The next one's Hampton Lucas Grove Road from State Route 155 to State Route 20. Also roadway resurfacing, including minor widening and roadway base improvements, asking for construction dollars there. And lastly, I had on there, East Atlanta Road. This is one we've asked for some funding on in the past on the 15 and 17. We can ask again, but I just thought we'd look to see if we could possibly get some roadway resurfacing just for the improvement to the road as it is. And that's from Old Conyers to Rex Road, roadway resurfacing, including any base improvements necessary. And I'll stop talking.
Okay, all right, so we've gone through the list of projects so far and got, you've received some comments. Are there any questions or further comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
My question goes back to the original question. Now, we've mentioned other projects to be added. Are you going to add those projects and bring this resolution back to us?
No, what I'm going to do is read into the record the additional projects. And then if the board is comfortable with voting on that tonight, then you all will vote on it. Then in October, we will bring back to you all, once we have been able to determine the projects, then we could develop the project costs, which is what you all will need to vote on to commit to the actual match amount. Now, if the board's not comfortable voting on that, we can certainly bring it back in October, but we need to start working on the applications. And what staff needs to know is if we're going to do all of the projects as recommended by staff in addition to the, I think, six, five or six additional projects that have been requested from the commissioners. Because what we don't want to do is work on 20 applications and then the board only votes to push for 10. And so, we do need some, some guidance in terms of whether this list works. I know one thing that we have heard is that we do want to proceed with the projects that were previously submitted. And so, the great thing about that is we do have the applications that we can look at in terms of developing this year's application. But we do need to get some guidance tonight in terms of which projects we need to move forward with.
Commissioner Thomas, you go. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons?
Can you reread the additions?
Yes, ma'am. So, I have included all projects that were previously submitted during the previous application process. We have Flipping Road from North Henry Boulevard. And I've heard from Commissioner Holmes to Hudson Bridge Road. And I've heard from you, Commissioner Clemmons, to Jonesboro Road. So, we'll need clarification on which one? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
To Jonesboro Road from North Henry.
Okay, and then I have Bill Gardner Parkway from I-75 to State Route 155. Have East Atlanta Road from Valley Hill Road to North Henry Boulevard. I have Jodico Road west of I-75. And then I have Jonesboro Road with the one change that David made from Mount Olive instead of Chambers Road. And then McDonough Parkway, we're removing because we're too far along in the process. And I believe I've captured everything else.
No, you didn't. I, I made the recommendation about the interchange.
Oh, my apologies. I do apologize. The scoping for the interchange.
On East Atlanta, on East Atlanta, we were looking for basically Valley Hill northward is what you had, is what you mentioned, is that?
The connector that we had in S P L O S back in 2013, from Valley Hill, behind Publix, connecting directly into Rock Quarry Road.
Okay, so just basically that portion, the Rock Quarry Extension, or whatever you want to call it, to East Atlanta?
We can, if we can fund four-lane it all the way up to Fairview Road, I'm okay with that too.
But primarily get it to the Valley Hill area?
Valley Hill to Rock Quarry.
Okay.
And we want, we want a four-lane that piece through, through Stop Bridge.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'm not sure on what the scoping means. Could you define that?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
He said scoping for two or three roads. Exactly what are you talking about?
The scoping is, it's almost like a concept report at the very beginning of a project. They look at, they're normally not as expensive, but what it is, is pre-engineering, doing studies, traffic counts suggest possibly what the road should be, whether it should be widened or a three-lane, any sort of environmental concerns. It's basically setting the foundation to ask for subsequent federal dollars as you move into engineering, right of way, and construction. So, it's, it's where they can basically, like I say, is to do studies of a road to determine, is this something that's feasible to eventually ask for, being a four-lane or some sort of roadway improvement?
And usually, that's funded by the county?
It'll be, it'll still be 80, 20, but a fun, scoping studies say it may be $500,000 and $400,000 paid by the, by the feds and $100,000 by the county. But there, there'll be no asphalt, there'll be no grading from a scoping study, but it's basically an intro.
I understand. It's, it's a study sets involved in the whole process.
It's, it's the initial, almost like the beginning of a project typically, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas, you go. Okay, Commissioner Clemmons? And then I've got to come after Commissioner.
I have a question about the scoping versus a feasibility study. And if a feasibility study has been done, why would you need scoping and what's the difference in the two?
I know on the interchange, there's been a feasibility study and an interchange justification report. But I think in, I don't know if I can clearly answer that. I just know in conversations with A R C and Georgia D O T, they recommended possibly for that particular interchange, asking for a, some additional study, scoping study type project. But I'm sure there's some new information, but there's probably already some information there that the scoping study would, would glean from and use.
And Commissioner Clemmons, if I may add to Mr. Simmons' comments, the feasibility study is, is conducted to determine if, and I'm assuming we're talking about the interchange, if an interchange is feasible. And so, there are certain set of regulations and standards that must be checked in terms of determining spacing needs, if the interchange is feasible in that particular location. David is exactly correct in terms of scoping, and I think I got a better understanding in terms of scoping than I've had previously. But it is the preliminary design stages for the project. If you will recall, we do have funding that's set aside in our S P L O S program for the interchange. And one of the things that the staff brought forward to the board, and I don't believe the board took any action on it, for the interchange was for us to do just what I think we're getting ready to ask the A R C to do if we do the scoping, scoping study. What it will do is, one, if we include it as a scoping project, it will get this project into the tip. And so, that affords us a better opportunity of asking for federal dollars for future phases. Now, what that also will do is allow that $5 million that's sitting there for the interchange to go towards the interchange, but we won't have to use all of that funding to do the design and development of it. And so, I hope that somewhat answers the question. But again, the feasibility is just to determine if the interchange is feasible. The feasibility study did not do any type of environmental or any type of concept plan that I'm aware of.
So, I just would say that we have the money for all of that. So, I don't know why we would ask for the money from A R C when we need to ask for money for these other projects that we don't have money for. So, I just want to make sure that I state that.
All right, other questions or comments? I know I wanted to make a statement and then I'll come back to Commissioner Thomas. So, we've got a list of how many projects that you are now counting up?
All right, let's, this is how I'll just go through them and we'll count them as we go.
No, because you submitted with at least six and we've added about four or five, right?
I've counted 10.
So, a total of 10 projects. Okay, and I know last year, we submitted four and then we had an addendum that had another one. So, we had a total of five. Do you remember how many projects we've submitted before? And then I want to come back to another question that I have because what I'm questioning is, we're going to have to prioritize some things, especially when it goes to submission. And so, I know John O'Rourke's out there because I still would like him to speak a little bit, a little bit later about once these projects admitted, how it's having to compete against other projects because there's a criterion checklist that has to be stated. So, I'm trying to think through. So I'm trying to think through how were the projects that we submit give us a more competitive position, especially when we're competing with other communities, so, so let, let, let John speak on that a little bit, and then I'm gonna come back to a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am, the, we are part, part of a 20-county region, and we work with all the cities and the counties, and typically, of course, most communities do submit multiple projects. The, what happens after those are submitted, we'll consult with Georgia DOT as a staff, collectively go through, evaluate projects, and some of the things that we look at would be things such as congestion relief, safety, and on top of that, even looking at how it improves mobility within communities. An important filter is also, we look, as Ms. Matthews indicated as well, is like projects of regional significance, because at the end of the day, that there is a limited amount of funding that's available in each year, so we have to, of course, work with our policymakers, GDOT and other partners, to make sure we're, we're all addressing the most impactful projects that especially have an impact on the regional network. So look forward, of course, to working with Ms. Matthews, Chair Wood, and we'll be, as we get into this review. So that would be the only thing that I would, I would suggest, is that it is very critical to prioritize, because one of the things that, of course, we wanna do as a staff is make sure we're addressing community needs, and so anything we can do to help in that regard, we'll be glad to.
All right, okay, and so, so thank you, Mr. Orr, and so I'm still back to, I'm, I'm sorry, oh, okay, I'm sorry, so Commissioner Holmes has a question for us, since you're up there.
So Mr. Orr, there was a DRI that was just submitted not too long ago for the Reeves Creek Development, where the convention center, it's 400-acre development off of Flippin and I-75. After that, DRI is completed and approved, would it move that Flippin Road and Stock Bridge area up in terms of priority, since that is a development of regional significance?
What it would certainly do is, as the, the community grows, developments occur such as this, is that certainly what that would have an impact would be on an analysis of future congestion levels, increased volumes and such, so indirectly, absolutely, we, that future growth does impact our congestion, and of course, would certainly have an impact on the network in that part of the community.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and so the questions that I was still wanting to, so we've got a list of 10 projects here, and thank you, Mr. Orr, for helping us to understand that we will be competing against other communities, and that the ones that I know that the ARC will be definitely wanting to look for priority are relating to regional significance. So my question goes back to, do we, have we done traffic volume and data crashes, especially as it relates to how these projects are gonna relate to the state highway, because again, I'm still trying to look for, how do we identify some levels of priorities, and traffic volume, I know, is significant, and also crash data, which relates to the safety of our citizens. So, you know, is that something that you all have figured into the projects, in addition to the priority that you have with the CTIP? Because we didn't hear in that data as we were speaking.
Right, and, and that's one of the reasons 81 East and Rock Quarry are both back on there, because they've been awarded before, and we're kinda pushing those along. As part of the, the tip solicitation application, they typically include requests for traffic volumes, which I pull off of GDOT's website. I don't have those for you tonight, but, but yeah, like I say, the main, that's why the two major road ones I put on there are ones we kinda already had, and then I was just looking at possibly doing a little something different with some resurfacing, even though I realized there would likely be some add-ons at this meeting.
And additionally, Chair Wood, as part of the comprehensive transportation plan process and the modeling, that is one of the criteria in terms of how they determine how our priorities are set. When the consultants develop the project list, there is a list of projects, and there's several checklists that they go through in terms of, is this a high-crash area, is this an area that their level of service may already be a failing level of service? So there is a plethora of data that supports the projects that have been identified in our comprehensive transportation plan, which is why staff brings those recommendations to you all, because we're pulling it from a plan that's already gone through a process. As Mr. Simmons has mentioned, as part of the application, we will have to provide the crash data, vehicle miles traveled, and so there's a lot of information that goes into the application. It's not a matter of us just submitting the road, indicating this road from here to here, there's a lot of information that we have to pull together to make sure that, one, we have a competitive application, because we are competing with other jurisdictions, and so we do look at where are the roadways that are gonna provide some congestion relief, where are the roadways that we are experiencing a high volume of traffic incidents, and where are those areas that we can argumentably say in good faith that, hey, this is not only a project that's beneficial to Henry County residents, but also for those that traverse through our county from our adjoining neighbors. And so we have that information that's available that will be included in the applications as well.
Okay, it would just been a good for the board to kinda see all of that, as we're talking about the projects and to help us to prioritize, I think is what I'm trying to bring out. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
One last question, we know that there is money set aside to do what is now being called the scope or feasibility study for the interchange. We've had a lengthy discussion about it before, and if those monies are already set aside for something of that nature, why is it important that it be included in this project list?
Well, and, and I can certainly speak to why a project of that magnitude needs to be included in the tip, because we don't have enough funding to do the entire project. And we do recognize that we're going to need some federal and state support if it is the desire of this board to have an interchange constructed in Henry County. I think right now, the only monies that we have available is about $5 million, and I think we spent some of that for the consultant to do the feasibility study, and for the consultant to develop the interchange justification report, but it is not nearly enough. And when we go to our federal and state partners to ask for funding for these federal projects, they want to know that it's part of an approved plan, and so that would be the, the reason behind trying to get it into the tip, and the way to get it into the tip would be through a scoping phase. Now, if, if the Atlanta Regional Commission moves to approve the funding for scoping, then the funds that we have available can certainly still be utilized for that project, but it frees, frees it up for us to put it towards maybe some right-of-way acquisition, or maybe towards our match amount that's required. But for any federal project in which we need some federal support, it has to be into our, it has to be included in our Transportation Improvement Program.
But if I heard you correctly, you stated whatever project that we put in this application, then we are committing to funding whatever we're responsible for, that part of the funding, am I correct?
What, what, what we are committing to is that if this board approves a project list that we're gonna bring back in October with a funding source, we will have to commit that we will fund at a 20% match those projects. So yes, we have to commit to that funding, which is what we've done on two previous projects that we received ARC funds for.
I'd like to make a comment as well, I think it's important that we understand that when we speak about the tip or the Transportation Improvement Program, that is the short-range plan, meaning projects that we need to move forward within the next six years. If you look at this comprehensive transportation plan that was given to us this evening, and it identifies that many of the projects that are already, have been constructed or completed or even underway, have had to take a step to get into the Transportation Improvement Plan, because again, you, many of the projects that we have have been done in phases, and this again is one of the major concerns that we hear about the traffic along Highway 155, freight traffic. The good thing is, is that there's been conversations already about how this has already gotten some preliminary approval from the Federal Highway Administration, which doesn't happen that easily, and so if it doesn't get into the tip, then you're gonna be stretching that time out even further. But again, we've got to look at all the other projects, too, but again, what is it, what are the projects that we need to look at that is gonna help the traffic flow throughout Henry County? Because you can't say that it, a road comes into one city or into one district and stops, so we've got to identify those projects that are gonna really significantly impress upon us, and that's why, again, I'm glad to see that there were projects in the Sploes that the board has also approved, and as well, to kinda help identify the issues that we need to address. Because again, the Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan identified that we've got a significant funding gap, but we're gonna have to phase these projects in, and we're gonna have to, again, continue to work at how do we cut down and address some of the costs as we move some of these projects forward. So any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I, I just have to say, it's gonna be difficult for me to, to vote on this resolution with the interchange included, given the fact that with the interchange comes the inland port, and the inland port is gonna be justification for funding for the interchange, and I can't see myself voting to bring inland port to this particular county or voting for, voting for anything of that particular nature. We talked about taking Henry County in another direction, and I think a Henry, inland port will, will kill this county for years to come. So I could not support this resolution with the inland port included, or the interchange.
Well, I'd like to respond to that, there is no association with this interchange in the inland port, and Commissioner Holmes, you were in a meeting with me yesterday with the Georgia Department of Transportation Commissioner, that literally spoke about the significance of this interchange for just the traffic conditions that GDOT is supporting here in Henry County. And in that meeting, I heard no conversation about an inland port. Again, I encourage our board to go and study this Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan. I encourage the board, Chair, if you can help us get a copy of the interchange justification report, if you can also get us a copy of the feasibility study, and in either of those documents, there is no priority about an inland port associated with this interchange. The report, and everyone has got it now, or should get it, but it speaks specifically, and I've been studying that report, I've been engaged in that report, and how we need to address the, the traffic congestion, because a lot of it has to do with safety issues, there's lots of crashes that are involved around that Highway 155. I also say that it speaks specifically about the volume of freight that we are experiencing now, and that we will experience in the future. So again, I, I, I hope that, again, the facts are stated, that there is no association with this, this interchange regarding inland port. I have not had any conversations to say that we need inland port, then get the interchange. The interchange is important for our freight congestion around here, and the safety of our citizens, and to also free up the traffic in this area that we're speaking about.
Chair Wood. So, Commissioner Clemens?
Yeah, and I would just like to say, since you guys brought up the State Department of Transportation meeting on yesterday, I was in that meeting as well, and what I heard the state office say about the interchange was that it was more for the state's impact of how the freight traffic and the economic impact that that has on the state, and that they would urge us to do it because of the state. And my response was, I work for Henry County and not the state, and so I think what we need to be focused on is these roads that are in our counties, that's gonna affect our counties, and I think that's what our citizens elected us to do, and not to be on the state's agenda. The state needs to worry about their agenda, but all of us were elected to worry about this county's agenda, so I really would like to see us focus more on these roads that's on this project that has to do with this county, so that our citizens, it's specifically states federally funded for local transportation improvements. It doesn't say for federal funding for local and state transportation improvements. The interchange is a state improvement, yes, Henry County benefits, but we benefit more by something that we can control quickly. It's gonna take more than $5 million to do the interchange, I think that we need to focus on putting something on this agenda that has to do with our local roads and move forward. We have plenty of time to deal with the state's agenda, but right now, we need to deal with the county's agenda.
And I would like to clarify, maybe there was a different interpretation in that meeting, but when I heard the GDOT commissioner speak, he spoke that this has regional significance, and this is part of what has been stated regarding what federal funding and state DOT projects that we support. And to hear the, the leader of the Georgia Department of Transportation speak more about how this project will definitely impact regional significance, and as we've just heard from our ARC person, it has some significance that we need to continue. I, again, go back and ask that please do understand that this is not a state agenda. If we did not hear from our citizens about the concerns around Highway 155, and we can actually see the traffic volume and traffic count, the crashes that are in that area, I, again, say that this is a local, state, and federal opportunity to address a significant problem here in Henry County. So that is the interpretation of what we have, maybe we need to invite in the Georgia Department of Transportation to, to get the facts, but again, I did not see this as a legislative agenda of any sorts, I saw it as, again, as we were looking at other highways that are here in the Henry County area, we have Highway 155, we have Highway 42, we have Highway 2081, Highway 138, and there's such of how, of state highways, again, that pass through this county, and we need to address a significant traffic issue here in Henry County. So again, if we need to continue with some resolution to say that this interchange is, is not here for inland port, but to address the traffic congestion, I am very much in support of addressing that. I also say that our voters here in Henry County voted for this interchange to move forward, and everyone did understand that it takes time for not just the interchange, but for any project to have. As we continue to look at how do we address our outdated infrastructure, we've got to have some solidarity on what are the priorities, and what are the key traffic opportunities to address the traffic congestion. So again, I guess we'll have to decide, you know, where we go, so now at this time, if there are any other questions or comments, Commissioner Barron?
Yes, I, I wasn't at the state meeting, but I was here in 2013 when we put the Sploes list together. I think Commissioner Holmes and myself are the only sitting commissioners that are up here now, and I don't remember any discussions about no inland port, all the discussions that I remember, and I won't get them to pull the minutes at all those meetings and go back and see, but it was all about trying to get the traffic off 155. And, you know, this, this board voted to, back then, to move forward with the feasibility study, and also with the justification report, interchange. And I've got letters from Chairman Smith back in November 13, 2015, and also Chair Wood sent a letter in 2018. And also Chair Wood and myself, it was important enough that we actually went to Washington and met with the Congress representatives from Henry County, and we went to each of us, and we worked our tail off going around in the rain, meeting all these people, but we voiced our opinion about this, and, but I don't recall anything about inland port. That's all I got to say.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner Wilson?
If the interchange is not gonna brain-tract the trailers, they already here, so the interchange is to help maneuver the tractor trailers off 155, 42, and so, and another thing that's coming to Henry County, I got a letter from GDOT, July 19th of this year, 38 miles of two-lanes of commercial truck lanes coming up through Henry County, starting at 475, gonna end at 155. So now they're gonna dump all those trucks on 155. If this interchange is not in place, we, we're gonna be in a deadlock. So the interchange is important for the traffic we have now, it's important for the traffic that's coming to us, and it's also important for the city of Locust Grove, which is, is building up its industry area as well, so let's go back to the, the Sploes. We have the money, we need to move forward to where we can get, get this project started before the two-lane truck traffic gets to us, so.
Okay, well, are any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barron?
Yeah, one other comment I wanted to mention, this was on the Sploes 4 list, and the money is set aside for this project, and I don't know how we can ask the voters to vote on Sploes 5, and we won't even follow through Sploes 4, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
All right, other questions or comments from the board?
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Yeah, I don't know what we're talking about now, but I wanna go back to local roads in this um, the local transportation improvement plans and make sure that we only have the um, federal funding for the local road projects on this list.
Okay, so we've heard any other questions or comments because now it's time to um, make a motion regarding um, the presentation that has been made this evening, um, with additional projects that have been discussed. So, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution adding um, Flippin Road from North Henry to Jonesboro Road, um, the East Atlanta Rock Quarry Connector, uh, Jodaco west of 85, I mean 75, Bill Gardner Parkway.
You have a motion on the second. Any further comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Okay, it fails. Okay, thank you. I.
So Chair, we will be bringing this back to the board in October um, for reconsideration because we, we've got to get some transportation funding for some much-needed roads and so if, if we don't get any direction from the board, we will proceed with looking at projects that are in our comprehensive transportation plan and looking at the list that we previously provided um, to the Atlanta Regional Commission. Um, at a staff level, we recognize the importance of getting some funding for these roads and so I certainly hope that between now and our next meeting in October, we can have some more conversation um, with the board in terms of any other projects that need to be considered. Thank you.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Okay, so at this time, um, we'll now move into the next agenda item and this is regarding a resolution awarding bids for special support vehicles and the pursuit of utility vehicles for public safety departments of the Sheriff, Fire Department and Police.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, again. Uh, a few months ago, we was discussing capital and the need came up and discussed about police cars and, and the public safety vehicles. Uh, at this point, we had a assessment from our fleet manager and, and it came up with a number we thought we could afford for the three lea-, three-year lease purchase program for uh, for fire vehicles, police vehicles and sheriff vehicles. Uh, at that point, we asked David Smith and, uh, to reach out and his team, uh, to find with Davenport, working with Davenport, to find the best interest rate we could find um, to, to, I guess, obtain that loan from our uh, for Henry County to purchase these vehicles. And this vehicles tonight, we're asking for uh, permission or approval. It's two parts. Part one is gonna be for the um, the award for the service vehicles for the fire, police and sheriff. It was a sealed bid, uh, sealed bid number 20-11 and sealed bid number dash 20-10 were solicited uh, through our procurement personnel and procurement process. Them bids did come back. It is our recommendation to the board uh, to award bid number 2010, uh, Hardy Chevrolet, Buick GMC uh, for the 72020 Tahoe special support vehicle for the fire department in the amount of 252,575 dollars and bid 20-11 to Wade Ford for the purchase of 50 2020 Ford Pursuit Vehicles for the police department and 202020 Ford Pursuit Vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. There will know if, I'm sure you looked at the um, the bid tabulation and these bid tabulations, uh, and we also are strongly about local vendors, even though our local vendor here did not uh, was not awarded a bid for a money amount, however, our policy does not allow on sealed bids over a hundred thousand dollars to take in the Henry rule of competitive, uh, I guess, or price matching, which would allow the local vendor to price match. Being a sealed bid, the bids are submitted by a deadline time, the bids are secured, uh, continue sealed and open at one time and this is a commodity that is exactly the same, so it is price-based and our policy basically says go with the lowest price for the exact same commodity. So that's what we did 'cause there's been some questions about the um, the local vendor being just a few dollars uh, less, so uh, that's where we are. So tonight, we're asking for this and part two, David and his team will discuss how we uh, went out to, to uh, obtain financing for uh, for this project. I'll take any questions.
Okay, Commissioner Holmes?
Um, first of all, I wanna say that um, that I support this. However, we um, we discussed um, approving um, all the capital projects.
Yes, sir.
Um, at the same time. Uh, my question to you is, you know, I noticed, I noticed there was a maturity date on the actual loan, so I wanted to know what type of vehicle are we using that has a maturity date?
I'm not sure. Maturity date on the loan or the vehicle itself?
Yeah, what type, what type of um, financial vehicle are we using to um?
So we're, I'll defer that to David. I'll defer that to David.
Commissioner, the maturity date is on the loan itself, so it's over a three-year period where we're borrowing the money from the bank, that's the maturity date. Typically, for vehicles, you have five years, their life of a vehicle is over a five-year period and so that's why the loan is going to be between a three to five-year period. And so it's at three years for us.
Typically, vehicles that have a mature, maturity date are, are, are bonds, correct?
These are, these are not bonds, sir.
Yes or no, typically?
No, sir.
Well, give, tell me, tell me another vehicle that has a maturity date?
This is, this is not, this is not a bond for a vehicle itself. This is a loan that we're taking out to pay for the vehicle, so we're borrowing money to pay for the purchase of the vehicle. In terms of a bond, which has a maturity date, in a bond situation, that's where we're actually going out to the market where investors, investors then buy our bonds from us and over time, those bonds have a maturity date.
And so that's what Davenport does, right?
Davenport is a financial advisor and in this capacity, they're also assisting us in going out and procuring.
Going out to the market, correct?
Going out to the market to, not the bond market, but going out to uh, issue RFPs for us in their capacity as a financial advisor.
I was looking at the rates. The rates um, sure do look like um, bond rates.
So, the rates, so these rates in terms of loans, so we're at like 1%, I think, or 1.5% if I'm correct, when Doug gets up here. Those are very low. If we were going out to the bond market, I think we'd be paying close to a 4%?
No, the bonds aren't that high.
4% rate?
They're like 2%. They're somewhere around 2% right now.
It's 1.7, I think was the winning, was the winning?
The winning bid was a 1.57%.
And so a typical bond rate would be in the 3% to 4% range. I'm sorry, sir?
Can you explain where the bond rates are right now?
Certainly, um, we're, what we're doing tonight is a equipment lease purchase and not going.
You speaking to the market?
Certainly, my, again, my name Doug Gebhardt with Davenport and Company, the financial advisor. Um, what we're asking for permission today is to do the equipment lease purchase. It is not a bond. Um, we have not gone to the market. What we've done is act in the capacity to procure RFP, to go through a competitive process to secure the lowest possible financing cost. Um, a, any type of vehicle purchase that you've made in the past might have gone through some sort of state program or just through the dealer itself, but by virtue of putting out the RFP, we're able to put the lowest um, interest cost uh, to the county. And so the difference between what we're doing today is that the lease, um, or the loan, in this case, the bank loan, we're working with one bank, TD Bank, um, has one stated uh, interest rate on it and that's a 1.57%. If we were to go to market, each individual maturity would have a different coupon payment on that and um, we would be selling to multiple investors, we'd have to get a credit rating on that, um, we'd have to prepare an official statement. We've done none of that. Essentially, what we've done is acted as your fiduciary um, to procure the financing to um, allow for us to purchase these vehicles, which you've given staff permission to move forward with.
So, so David, if that's the case, why, why couldn't you have done that directly? That would've saved us some money.
Well, we're using their expertise in this area as well as their expertise in securing financing in the RFPs from various banks.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
You said this is a lease purchase, correct?
It's a lease, yes ma'am, it's three payments in three years, we own the vehicles.
Okay, um, at the end of the lease, will there be a balance due on this lease purchase? So everything is?
Three payments.
Okay. And the payments itself, is this budgeted already?
It will be budgeted, Commissioner, and that's what we kind of was hoping to, to get this. This is a critical need right now for our, our, our police vehicles. Uh, if you know, we have not, our Ford has not purchased, or actually built like a Crown Vic in um, in several years and we're still running a lot of our fleet of Crown Vic. So, we've, being a, a kind of a, to a crisis on, on our patrol vehicles, we went to do this to do a three-year process to roll into that three payments and then roll that into a, a capital improvement plan for our vehicles, for the police sheriff and the, and the command staff of the fire. Uh, so yes, it will be budgeted part of our moving forward, uh, at, at next year's budget when I first pay this due.
So at this point in time, it's going to come from fund balance since it's not budgeted?
There's no, go ahead David.
If I may, Commissioner, so the goal is one, to approve the purchase of the vehicles. The second step is then to approve the financing, a method of financing for those vehicles and that's where the money's going to come from, which would be the capital financing piece.
Um, the next question, like Commissioner Holmes stated, when we looked at capital projects earlier in the year, we have a, we had a list of capital projects that we were going to do at one time, was looking at funding for them and this has a very good interest rate of 1.57, I think is where we are. Was there a reason why you didn't bring that entire package back to us at this wonderful interest rate of 1.57?
So there are different types of financing and when we talked about the prior capital project lists or the entire capital project lists, we talked about tools to put into toolkit to finance those various projects. One of those was the U R A that we discussed, another was the G S A that we discussed. Then we discussed bonding, which you go to the market, which Doug has already so expertly talked to, a referendum. Then we talked about revenue bonds. In this particular case, we also had talked about financing from a bank and the best method to finance the vehicles, the most expeditious way to finance the vehicles and the most efficient, effective and efficient way to do that is by going out to get a loan from that instead of putting it on a bond.
And Commissioner, it was presented, the 15 million, uh, was the same process was sent out um, about three months ago and brought to the board, but no action at that time. At this point, we had to move forward, we took the police cars, I had that 15 million, this, this amount here is just taken out of that, just so we can move forward with our major issue right now with these police cars.
And excuse me, but how many cars did you say you'll be purchasing?
Be 77 total.
77?
Yes, ma'am. Divided by, you know, seven to the fire to replace their battalion vehicles, which is their 24-hour command vehicles for them, uh, the sheriff 20 and 50 for the police department, patrol, patrol division, 40 for patrol, 10 for the investigative division.
And I am disappointed that we've not been able to find a vendor, well, a vendor in our area did not win the bid and I understand it was a sealed bid and what have you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, if I may, the positive is we did find a minority vendor, a D B E vendor, uh, which was one of the goals of Henry County, is to reach out and make certain that we provide that opportunity for them.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens and Commissioner Barnes?
Uh, I have a concern in reference to um, if our fleet department has a vehicle mileage level that we need to look at because I know that our police officers are in high-speed chases, they drive those cars hard, uh, they drive them consistently more, you know, the whole time that they're on the shift. Um, it's ridiculous to see our officers driving down the street with tires that look like they've fallen off the rims, the cars are dated, older than, you know, my children and um, you know, so what are we gonna do about putting something in place about how many miles? Because we're buying this three years, they could have a hundred thousand miles in three years. Do we keep them and let them get to 250,000 miles or what's gonna be the program that we do? Let me, let me finish. Um, and I like the fact that we did a lease purchase, that's what everybody's doing now. If you've never done a lease purchase on your car personally, that's the route. I think one of the things that I said when I first got elected was even about our fire trucks, it needs to be leased purchased. When they're bad, when they got too many miles, turn them in and start all over again. There's no way we're gonna be able to catch robbers flying through Henry County with broke-down vehicles, 250,000 miles and our police officers shouldn't be driving that. So if we have to do a lease purchase, pull this out of uh, the capital and do a lease purchase for this, I think this is a good thing. But I do wanna know, how do we make sure that we don't keep these vehicles for 250,000? If we put the vehicle mileage in place, you never have to worry about the next Board of Commissioners sitting up here not wanting to fund police cars that are old.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they'll be outdated and you'll have to change them out because they're too old. So is there something in place?
Yes, there is. In fact, if you notice Splash had the vehicle replacement plan. So this here is gonna say budgetary amount, we can roll over, get these police cars here, hopefully the, the Splash 5, part of Splash 5 is a public safety for the vehicle replacement to continue on. You're exactly right, we have 80 cars over 150,000 miles today and that's just that one department. Uh, the problem is over the last, gosh, I've been here a long time, we have to fight every year, whatever's left over, we'll buy a few cars. And it's just, we, we can't have a fleet and the size of department we have now provide services and buy, and buy 10 or 8 cars every year. Uh, it just don't work out, the math don't work out. So we have to bite off a big chunk and roll that over and we need to make sure that we budget moving forward, we budget some lease money to make sure that we have the best equipment. Our goal, and it's gonna take a few years to get there, our goal is 100,000 miles, 150, 175, 150, move to 100,000 and we sell them at 100,000, get some money back and turn that money back into our vehicle replacement plan to help fund 20% of it. So I think that's some goals. We also looking at some other options of trying to find some revenue on our, um, on the side events and when they lease a police officer, lease a vehicle, so some of that money should go back into our vehicle replacement also. But our goal is to get, when we sell our cars, instead of selling for $300 junk that they can see our, our community right up and down the road in an old police car, we sell them for a hundred thousand, for another community can buy them for four or $5,000 and turn that money back into our replacement plan.
So you didn't, uh, so can we see something come before the board about a, uh, do a study and figure out?
Sure.
How many miles it should be?
We can formalize it, yes, we have informal?
Yeah, yeah, because we don't have anything in place.
We'll formalize it, we'll be glad to do that.
And then, um, yeah, because I know that we had a couple of police officers this summer that was driving around in cars with no air, that, you know, we, we have to do better.
Yes, ma'am, we can make that.
Okay, Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Brad, what is the average uh, miles on a police car a year?
A lot. Uh, I'm not sure a year, I don't have that data, Jody has that, but I think it is about 40,000 uh, miles.
Forty?
30 to 40,000. Depends on which district, how big your district is. Uh, now, we could decrease, we have decreased some of that because we have doubled up on some of the police cars just because of the lack right now in, in the shop. We've taken some of the old police, uh, the older cars that was actually uh, turned in and replaced with our chargers and Jody, uh, he has been a saving grace by rehabbing some of them to make them work for now. Our issue is, and I'm not just here to slam dodge or anything, our chargers we bought last time, a year and a half, about two years ago, the last 20 chargers are falling apart. They're not making their life expectancy and they're, uh, they're not. So as we do with everything we do, we, we, we look at what's best on the market right now. And right now, what we're, uh, the studies have shown and there's, and the research is Explorer is the best pursuit vehicle and we want a pursuit vehicle. That's one of the reasons even the fire, the Tahos, that pickup truck concept we went with is not safe for pursuit vehicles and they're pursuing also. So Commissioner, I'll, I'll definitely get that number for you and we'll definitely bring in some mileage and some, some more uh, formalized replacement plan.
Okay, the other, the other question, of course, I asked you this today, uh, it was kinda disheartening when we looked at these bids and, and Bellamy Strickland, which is a mile from us, they were $23 off the mark and getting this bid and, and uh, you know, I, I know you said anything over 100,000, it has to be a sealed bid.
A sealed 100,000 bid is not qualified for our Henry First concept, as our policy's written.
Yeah, and anything under 100,000? Yeah, and anything under 100,000, then they would qualify.
All right, yes, ma'am.
That is correct.
So, maybe next time, we just bid one vehicle at a time.
Next time, they have to sharpen their pencils a little bit better.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner, I'll get that number for you.
Okay, get done, Commissioner Barn?
Yeah.
Okay, and I, uh, let me come to Commissioner Thomas, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemmons and Commissioner Wilson.
I do want to, um, agree with Commissioner Barn that we definitely wanna put efforts in using our community vendors when we are making these, uh, bids and trying to get them involved in, um, Henry County economics here. Uh, one of the things I would say is, maybe we need to look at, instead of 77 cars coming from one person, uh, that we need to break it up, as he stated, if we can do 35 here or 20 here, whatever it takes, to so that some of our local vendors can be involved in this process, that would be great. They could still be sealed bids, not trying to do anything under the cover, they could be sealed bids for 20 cars, and sealed bids for 35 cars, and that would give more opportunity for other vendors to participate.
Yes, ma'am, and I'll tell you one thing I failed to mention earlier, is there's been a big push by the board to also do our sealed bid and not take state contract. So, we did a configuration of what it would, if we went state contract and just brought it to you guys and not bid it out, we would've spent, we saved $64,000, which we bought almost two police cars, or one and a half police cars more because we used sealed bid. So, again, we, we followed the, the board's advice and, and, uh, did the sealed bid process. But, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Commissioner Clemmons, Commissioner Wilson, and Commissioner Barn, and then I have a comment.
And, um, Commissioner Barn and Commissioner Thomas, no, that has been our thing about local, so I have a question for our county attorney. Um, I really want to see that we either, uh, does the board have the authority to do one of two things that I would like to recommend tonight, either to, to award to both the first and the second bidder, which is our local vendor that was only $23 short, or can give the whole 100% to our local vendor, and that's what I would like to do if we have authority to do that.
You, you do not have the authority to bypass the low bidder.
But can we split it?
You, you could split it by, you could split it by vehicle types, but not, you can't just randomly split it among vendors. So, there were multiple vehicle types bid, and you could award, you know, all the, I don't even know what kind of cars they were, all the two doors could go to one, however they were bid out, they could be, it could be split, but it would be by vehicle types, not just randomly among vendors.
It would not help our local vendor, Commissioner, because they're this one vehicle that they bid on, and that was the type, so, so the Explorers, we had a few bid out, the, the undercover packages, a few bid out the patrol package, you can split them, but they're not local, that's just some...
Okay, um, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Barn?
Brad, when you do that, bring that back for the PD cars, uh, can you bring something back for the ambulances and fire trucks and others? I know it's a little bit different criteria.
Sure.
Because the ambulances, I think, replace every year or so, let us know how that criteria runs as well.
We'll put together the full package again, and most of it's already listed in our capital, but we're actually updating our list now because it's been a little bit, and also our facilities plans, we'll definitely, yes, sir, I'll bring it back.
Commissioner Barn?
Yeah, uh, I just wanna know, is Emmanuel Jones, does he ever bid on any of our stuff? I mean, he's right down the street.
I didn't hear the name, I'm sorry.
He did not bid on this package.
He didn't bid on this package.
Huh?
He did not bid on this package.
He did, okay, but does he ever bid on stuff?
I'm not sure, Commissioner, especially the sealed bid, it's, it's, it's very strict process, and, and the team goes down the, the guidelines at one time.
Okay.
All right, and my comments are, um, when can we expect to have the procurement process update and reviewed, um, by the board, because, um, what we're talking about now are policies that we need to modify so that we are being consistent and fair, not just for, you know, you know, bids like this, but, um, this board has asked several times about and make, make recommendations, and I just think that we need to plan real soon to bring the procurement process up as an update, and to identify where we can potentially, um, you know, make recommendations, um, to the process based on, um, input from, from the board. So, again, that's policy that we probably need to review, so if you can add that to the agenda going forward sometime soon, I know we've made that request, if, if we can do that.
Yes, Madam Chair, that was actually one of the items that Sherry has tasked me with as a goal that I'm being evaluated on this year, so.
Okay, if we can put a timeline to it, I think it's good.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the other thing is, um, I do know that we probably, what, a year or two ago, just started having a fleet replacement plan.
It is, yes, ma'am.
And part of the challenges we are is trying to make sure that we are updating the, the fleet according to that fleet replacement plan, but at the same time, we've got to talk about the capital that needs to go with it, along with these lease purchase options. So, um, again, I don't know when we gonna bring back the capital list for, um, final vote and those kinds of things, but again, when we come back, let's talk about how the fleet that we're talking about addresses the fleet replacement plan, because that's, again, a major thing.
Yes, ma'am, and, and just to clarify too, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the first amount tonight is for the vehicles, after this point, if what's the vehicles are approved, we'll go out for bid for the equipment for the vehicles, and that's inclusive in this part, in this process, so it's a turnkey vehicle.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Barn?
Let me, um, go back, are, are we talking about a five-year lease on the...
Three.
Three-year lease.
Three years, okay, so that puts us about 120,000 miles.
Roughly, I think it's, give it, take it, I'm gonna get the exact number for now, definitely send it to you.
Okay, and then Commissioner Thomas?
I do wanna mention, since you stated you'll be going back for the equipment to go on these cars, remember what we stated tonight, when you can break up a, a request into 20s and 30s and what have you, to give local, um, vendors an opportunity to bid, that would be most appreciated, and there again, sealed bids according to policy, but you can break them up into different quantities, you don't have to have all 77 in one, uh, purchase package, we could help our economy here in Henry County.
So, Commissioner, I think you're, you're definitely on point, on that we will, because the detective vehicles be different than the fire vehicles and the sheriff vehicles, they'd have a different level. Uh, what we decided to do is do that in-house, and we'll definitely separate by that discipline. Uh, we do it in-house, if we would've had one total package, we would've had about a 15% service charge for somebody else to send it somewhere else to be fitted, so that's why we decided to do the cars separate and save that money and actually put that money back into another police car, uh, by us subbing out, and, but we'll definitely do your recommendation and make sure that we do the sheriff, the fire, the police, and the detective vehicles separately, because they will require separate equipment.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, um, here in, um, C and N, we are now open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, are there further comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, we'll now move into the next item, which is related to this one, which is a resolution authorizing the finance for the public safety vehicles that we just discussed.
Madam Chair, we need further discussion, I think we discussed the, uh, opportunity, is there any other questions you guys have on the financing part?
Okay, um, any other questions regarding the finances, I know we underspoke about the lease purchase and so forth, and the allocation between the different departments. Um, any other questions or comments regarding, um, the presentation? Okay, now, the floor is now open for a motion regarding a resolution to authorize the financing of the public safety vehicles. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that resolution two passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving to our planning and zoning items, and the first one is, um, public hearing AP 1902, um, which is Iris Lake, Henry 888 LLC, appealing the denial of a conditional use request for property located at 1209 Iris Lake Road in District 1, and so we invite up, um, Mr. Rudolph, how are you doing this evening?
Hi, Chair, um, board members, uh, thank you for allowing me to present, the case before you tonight is illustrated on the overhead and also in your exhibit books, this is 141 acres that's located on Iris Lake Road, very close to the intersection with King Mill Road, this property is zoned RA, residential agricultural, the applicant has requested a conditional use permit for an outdoor adventures park, and so the updated site plan that the applicant has submitted shows that this is primarily for zip lines, but it's also including ancillary uses such as overnight accommodations and, and so forth. So, the site plan that the applicant has shown, uh, indicates that the main entrance is on Iris Lake Road, the subject property extends over to Rabbit Run, which may offer, uh, the opportunity for a, an emergency entrance and so forth. The management of this outdoor adventures park would be through American Adventures Parks Systems, which also manages the historic Banning Mills Outdoor Adventures Park, and the applicant has indicated that this is proposed to be very similar to historic Banning Mills. Staff has evaluated the applicant's request, we did recommend approval with conditions, however, at the conditional use hearing on May the 23rd, the zoning board disagreed and denied the applicant's request, so the applicant has appealed to the Board of Commissioners for reconsideration, and I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, I just had one question, so what was staff's recommendation again?
Our recommendation was for approval with conditions.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we begin the public hearing? Okay, well, um, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'd like to, um, invite up those who wish to speak in favor, including the applicant, um, the collective group will be given 10 minutes to speak in favor of, and likewise, there will be 10 minutes granted for anyone wishing to speak in opposition. Um, so at this time, um, we're gonna invite up those wishing to speak in favor, including the applicant. And please state your name and addresses that you police come.
Hey, Madam Chair, uh, members of the... Order Commissioners, my name's Andy Welch, I represent the applicant and the request. I have a, had a short video for you to watch of the zip line facilities at Bain Mills, it would take about a two-minute watch, um, but because of the security system that you have in place now, we can't do YouTube videos over your, over your system. Um, but the proposal is to do a zip line, uh, project amusement park on the subject property, uh, we have worked with the, uh, Commissioner of the district as well as staff on a, uh, 20 conditions that would apply to the conditional use of this project, mostly geared towards safety, uh, ensuring that it's operated in a manner that is safe for the users, um, that it also will provide some accommodations, these are tree houses, um, and small cottage cabins that the, that users can stay overnight, use the facilities and engage in the zip line, uh, program, and if there is time left over, I will try to show you some of that video, but I wanted to allow for people that are supportive of the project to speak to you, also an expert actually in providing, who developed the exact system that's being used here, that is used in our state park system and used across the state of Georgia and elsewhere for this particular zip line project. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to those to speak, and then I'll come back up at, at, if there's additional time, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the Commission.
Good evening.
My, my name is David Versell, I am with We Partner, we are the property owner, our office is at 7094 Peachtree Industrial Boulevard in Peachtree Corners, Georgia. We purchased this property a couple of years ago as part of an acquisition strategy in Henry County, we own, uh, multiple residential, commercial and development sites around the county, and have, uh, really made a, a big investment in this community, we're pursuing various developments at this time in District 1, District 2, and the city of Hampton, and this site we felt was different, it's a very special property, as Mr. Welch stated, it's 141 acres, 22 of those acres are Iris Lake East itself, it's a beautiful property, and we just felt like this property deserved more than being just another development site, we really took a look at what was possible here and wanted it to be a special place. We sort of thought about, can it be a tourist destination, but one that's still respectful of the land and the area around it, it's a bit of a transitional area, it is zoned RA, but just to the west are two large residential subdivisions on the other side of Iris Lake, and then to the northwest is the Lambert Farms Logistics Park, the huge warehouse logistics, um, property that's under development right now. We really wanted something that stood out and that was different, and that added to what there is to do here in Henry County. Over the past year, we've been talking about this concept extensively with the community, the business community, the hospitality community, really been overwhelmed by the support we've seen, and we really feel like this could be an amazing addition to the Henry County community. When we thought about, well, who do we wanna work with on this, the only, the only phone call I made was to, uh, Mr. Michael Holder, who is, uh, with American Adventure Park System, Historic Banning Mills, I'm not exaggerating when I say he is one of the top experts, not just in the country, but in the world, on zip lines and aerial adventures, he literally invented a lot of the technologies and, and safety procedures that are involved in these parks, and we're honored to have him involved in this project, and I'd, uh, like him to come up and say a few words about his background and what he and his company can bring to this project.
Commissioners, they said I weren't gonna have to talk this time, but looks like I am. Uh, I have a military background, aviation background, uh, had 20 years, uh, I'm a retired Army, uh, officer, and, uh, that's where I learned to build zip lines, uh, actually, this is gonna date me, guys, this is really gonna date me, uh, demonstrated combat zip lines for Gerald Ford at Fort Benning, uh, when he was president, so that was a long time ago, and that wasn't something that people played with, it was something out of a combat necessity that you use for expedience, and I didn't think people should really play with them, and then people started playing with them. So, uh, someone needed to get out on the forefront, get it with, get the standards going, get the ASTM standards online, ANSI standards, and, uh, we got into the forefront of that, and, uh, we helped bring that about. Uh, we operate and run 10 zip line tours and hospitality sites around the country, and are, uh, DNR partners with three different states and municipalities, and tourism partners with the state of Georgia. Any questions with that?
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll allow those who wishing to speak in favor to come forward, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening Commissioners, it's nice to see everyone, my name's Kelly Rose, I am a, uh, I'm a resident of McDonough, I'm in, uh, actually District 3, I have my nine-year-old here with me, she's been working on a, I'm in full support of this project, she actually did a Google slide, uh, presentation that I'll email to everyone in favor of the project. Um, it is very refreshing to see, have a developer come in and appreciate the beauty of Henry County, and not just what they can get out of it, but what they can bring to it. Uh, I saw many of you at the Council for Quality Growth this last week, and we talked about the state of Henry County, and what I see is this project is the epitome of quality growth here. Uh, Chair, I've, I've heard you say many times here, it's no secret that I am for preservation and conservation, and I've heard you say many times that property owners have rights too when it comes to warehouses and big developments, and, and rather than have a roomful of angry constituents, what we have here are people in support of a project to preserve 140 acres of Henry County land. That is not gonna come very often, and I, and had to bring here, I will say that I posted in three different local groups, and in three hours, I've had over 15 shares, 100 likes, and not one negative comment about this development. So, if that doesn't mean anything to you, it should, because everyone has something to say, and people are quick to say something negative, but the community wants this, we want an outdoor facility, not an indoor, another indoor facility, but an outdoor facility where we can appreciate and come together, and where we do not necessarily agree on many other issues, councilman, uh, I'm so sorry, Commissioner, I hope you understand that this is what our community needs. Pam Strickland, who is a neighbor to the property, has given me permission to say today that she is in full support of this as well, and she's a direct neighbor, so where traffic cannot be, traffic feasibility cannot be an issue to vote against 600 ho- homes which could be built here if they sell this, what it, it also cannot be used against speaking for this, because we are not gonna see the kind of traffic and the kind of lack of infrastructure if this property is sold to other people and they then turn it over and build 600 homes. Please, help us keep Henry County green, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Yes.
My ti- my name is Tim Hauska, and I work for Keller Williams Atlanta Partners, and that 140 acres is like this, that other square that you see right there is 49.96 acres in which I have, uh, representing the owners of that, I have it listed for sale, and last Saturday, I spent time on 141 acres. I walked through the woods, I seen a lot of deer, I seen a lot of ducks, I seen geese, rabbits everywhere, and then I was surprised that that could be so developed and homes everywhere the way the layout of the land is, and I, because I... And I, because at first, I didn't think it could because the way it went down. I saw that many homes could be put in there. So I said, you know, the best thing we could do is conserve this for the animals, for the fowls, for, just as she spoke, for, for all of that. So right now, the zoning says that it's zoned, that you need two acres per unit. At 140-some acres, it's approximately 73 homes could be put in there now without changing nothing, which is way ridiculous for the traffic in that area. I also have from the zoning department, the future map of zoning, which is medium density, which means they're going to approve that for somebody for six units per acre. Six units per acre times approximately 150 acres is 900 homes. 900 homes with two cars each is 1,800 cars going in and out of this place every day. You talk about a nightmare. And I was here at the first meeting, and some of the homeowners stood up and said, well, we're worried about this traffic. This is too much traffic. Well, you put 900 homes in there, and you're going to talk about some more of this other stuff we were talking earlier, where we're going to get millions of dollars to funnel this traffic around. So I am in a total 100% support for the nature to reserve this place, and the little bit of, of systems that they're going to put on there for the few places they're going to have is so minimal that I believe this would be just a, such a positive thing for Henry County to reserve, that big reserve like that-
Thank you, sir.
-in the middle of all the development.
Thank you.
So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll grant 10 minutes for those who wishing to speak in opposition. So if you would please come forward now, and again, state your name and-
My name's Jonathan. I'm here, I suppose, in opposition, because we only have 10 minutes for the, for approval. I'd like to thank you guys for coming out to show this is a cool project that you have going, but I think there's some issues, because the Comprehensive Transportation Improvement Plan, the National Recreation and Park Association, it recommends 10 acres of park per thousand of residents, and in 2015, we only had 5.9 acres per thousand residents. So according to today's population, we would need to increase the parks by 240, because we've only added 24,000 residents. So I think that we're starting to see too many parks and too much green space. So that's definitely becoming a problem for our county. And I think we all enjoy driving all the way up to the north side of Atlanta, an hour and a half away, to get to any type of entertainment venues. And as you can see, a lot of the restaurants that have come in, they're having record profits down in our area, because there's a demand for it. So I definitely don't want to see a zip line come here, because that means a lot of people are going to have quality entertainment here in our county, and that's definitely an issue for me and a lot of the other residents here. And I think you'd see that on the Facebook posts as well. And I just want to thank you guys again for coming on out here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If you would please come forward now. Again, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward now. Okay, here and now, that concludes our public hearing aspect. We do invite the applicant to, to join Mr. Stacy Rudesell Jordan. And at this time, we'll open the floor for any questions or comments by the Board. Commissioner Wilson.
So about three months ago, I went up to Banning Mills, and I visited Mr. Holder. He spent, I don't know, several hours, and we, we looked at zip lines and swinging bridges and treehouses, and it's a neat place. My biggest concern is how safe is this stuff? I tell you, after looking at their belay system, their harness system, and talking to these guys, they're, they're top-notch professionals. They know how to do this. So I come back, and I said, you know, I'm going to see if the fire department guys go up and see what they, what they think about it. So they went, there's four guys from the fire department that go up, and they visit. They come back and said, these are top-notch professionals. They know what they're doing. So with that, then we started building on the conditions. Thank you for Mr. Holder for allowing for me to come up and spend that time, because it was, it was cool. These guys got like 40 years' experience in building these, these zip lines, and I think your, your track record for injuries are minimized. I pulled the records. So we pulled three years of 911 records at the Banning Mills zip line. So there was, I think we, we come across a few sprained ankles, and very few, but these guys are, they're not, they have wilderness medics. I didn't even know what a wilderness medic is, but these guys are trained to get people off of zip lines, and, and so the fire department come back and said, if we went to work for them, we'd have to go to additional training. So it's a lot different from the EMS side of things, but these guys are top-notch, they're worldwide, they highly qualified, certified. They're, I'm not sure, I think you had six guides that day, it was up there, but I was impressed. So then we come back, and we go to work. We, we see how it's going to work for the community. I was excited to, that we could put this package together, and I was hoping that the, that the applicant was going to accept the conditions we put on the property. Like Mr. Welch said earlier, a lot of these conditions for the safety of the, of the people that's going to be there. So I, between the applicant and staff, and thank you all for working with me through all this, it took a hard, a lot of hard work from the applicant to staff and myself. And so Stacy, I'm going to ask you to read all 20 conditions that we have put toward this property.
Yes, sir. Condition number one, any dumpster or dumpsters shall be placed on a concrete pad and enclosed on three sides. The enclosure shall be constructed of the same materials authorized by condition number three, and shall be a minimum of eight feet in height. Dumpsters shall not be visible from the public right-of-way. Number two, a landscape and lighting plan shall be submitted for the approval of the Building and Plan Review Department. All lighting is to be of moderate brightness and shielded to prevent light pollution to adjoining residential property. The 60-foot required buffer shall not be graded at any time and shall be enhanced with additional vegetation and/or privacy fencing to adequately mitigate any adverse impacts to adjoining residential property. Number three, any new building or building shall maintain a residential appearance and shall be constructed of all sides, brick, stone, wood, cedar, pine, fir, et cetera, whether horizontal or vertical, or rustic equivalent or any combination thereof, reminiscent of state park buildings, and equivalent to buildings at Banning Mills. Vinyl-based products are only permitted in the softets, eaves, and phaesia. Number four, freestanding or project entrance sign or signs shall be limited to ground signs. Ground signs shall be limited to a monument base, which shall extend at least as high and as wide as the signed face, and sign structure above the monument base shall be constructed of materials such as brick, stone, stucco, wood, or metal consistent with the rustic architecture of the development. Number five, site access is to be located such that the minimum intersection site distance is met, and shall meet the minimum spacing requirements as per the Unified Land Development Code or ULDC. Number six, the site access is to provide a deceleration lane and acceleration taper designed to Henry County Department of Transportation or HCDOT standards. Number seven, the owner or developer shall provide traffic data from similar sites elsewhere to HCDOT to determine if any other road or right-of-way improvements are to be required. Number eight, the entire Iris Lake Adventure Park operation will be constructed, managed, and operated by American Adventures Park Systems, or AAPS. AAPS is the owner and operator of 10 world-class aerial adventure parks around the United States, including Historic Banning Mills in Whitesburg, Georgia. AAPS will apply all of the same safety protocols observed at Historic Banning Mills by personnel from the Henry County Fire Department, and will coordinate with the county's fire department and emergency management staff on annual inspections and ongoing monitoring of all equipment and safety protocols. AAPS will further ensure that any proposed changes to safety protocols be approved first by the fire chief. Number nine, all structures on the property will be attractively built with quality materials. There will be no vinyl siding or stucco exteriors on any of the new structures. Number 10, RV parking or storage will not be permitted on the property. Number 11, the site will not include any commercial amusement, such as miniature golf, carnival or midway rides, or electronic or video games. The amusements on the site will be limited to the aerial adventure park uses, including zip lines, rope bridges, climbing towers, wooden obstacles, walking trails, and related uses. Number 12, there will be no motorized vehicles, such as ATVs or scooters, allowed on the site, staff use accepted. Number 13, the use of the subject property for guest cottages and any type of lodging units provided by the owner or operator for public use, here and after overnight accommodations, shall only be permitted as ancillary uses to the conditional use of the subject property for outdoor amusements, and shall be limited to 20 total units. Number 14, visitors occupying overnight accommodations for 14 nights must vacate the subject property for a minimum of three nights before returning. Overnight accommodations shall not be used to accommodate more than their posted capacities. Number 15, any dam breach zone shall be noted and illustrated on development plans. No cottages or other lodging units shall be permitted within the dam breach zone. Number 16, at least one emergency access point shall be provided on Rabbit Run, meeting the approval of the Henry County Fire Marshal. Number 17, a master plan noting and illustrating the development of the subject property shall be submitted for the approval of the Building and Plan Review and Planning and Zoning Staff. No permits shall be issued until the plan has been approved. Number 18, the minimum area of the development of the subject property for outdoor amusements and all ancillary uses shall be 141 plus or minus acres. Number 19, no additional conditional uses except for a special event center, limited to five per year, shall be approved for any portion of the subject property until the approved conditional use for outdoor amusements and all ancillary uses has expired or otherwise been rescinded. Number 20, individual business license shall be required for all uses, primary and ancillary.
Thank you, sir. I do have a quick question for, for the applicant. I believe the, the rates for these treehouses are about $250 a night. Is that correct?
It depends on the season.
Okay.
They're not, they're, they're priced for, for a very good experience, and sometimes it comes with use of the facilities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay, well, here and now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve with all the 20 conditions. This read in.
Certainly.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor. Okay, it passes five to one.
Thank you.
Five, yes, congratulations. So it passes five, and Commissioner Clemens was not here. Okay, very good. So we'll now just move forward. As previously noted, public hearing COMPAM 1902 was actually removed and delayed to another date, as well as the next public hearing item that was publicized, which is RZ 1906. And I guess I'll read portions of it. That one was in District Two, and it was regarding a rezoning of C1 to MU along east of 1941 and west of Highway Three in Old Griffin Road. And then it was definite, requested to have RZ 1905 in District Four postponed until October for the request of a rezoning from RA to RS for property located at the intersection of East Lake Road and Springdale Road. So that concludes our public zone, planted and zoning cases. So at this time now, we'll recognize any public comments, and these are individuals that have signed up prior to the meeting through the clerk's office to express their concerns. And this time, we'll ask the county clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
There's just one tonight, Robert Kolpeck.
And again, each individual will be given five minutes of uninterrupted time. So at this time, we'll invite Mr. Robert up. So good evening.
My name is Robert Kolpeck, 272 Cotton Indian Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia, 30252. Picture is at Hidden Valley Park. I made a comment last meeting about our basketball goals, and we've taken the backboards down, but what I really wanted to do there was to level out that property and let the kids have a basketball court. That's the backstop that we have that, I wrote it down, I believe Commissioner Holmes said, when we decided to close Cockham Park, the kids would be moving to an A-class facility known as Hidden Valley Park. The backstop needs to be replaced. Basically, they have no available base, bases for practice, and the bathrooms are locked. So I'm not sure, when you have a bunch of kids out there, what they're supposed to do for the bathroom, but I think our kids deserve a little better, and we were told it was going to be better. It hasn't, hasn't transpired at Hidden Valley Park. Last meeting, I did ask anybody that was here to come visit the park with me. I will show you what I feel is deficient. Would, would welcome anybody to come and visit with me. My next part would be the commissioners' trip to DC. I raised this up the last commissioner meeting, it was in the newspaper, but we had commissioners go to DC for a Congressional Black Caucus. The problem with that, for me, is that I'm not allowed to get in that, that group. And there was on the part where you couldn't actually ask why there was a reason to go there, the box was not checked. And all the forms were checked, no, and basically, if the county employees asked to explain the training, will benefit you, or Henry County. Now, I don't mind if the commissioners want to go on their money, but when I've got to pay $8,000, and we have a park that looks like that, and we have a commissioner in District Four that wants to build a new park, we have 12 people to work on these parks, and there's 27 parks. Our parks are not, not to the standard we need, and I don't believe it's the people in the park that are doing. I think Tim Cooley and his group work really hard. We don't give them the resources. We, we talked, Ms. Thomas, about doing all kinds of resource, ask a hundred questions at these meetings, but, you know, I look at one of your properties you own, 107 Flipping Road, it's dilapidated. Because the city of Stockbridge is the jurisdiction, they don't have a forced cleanup on that property. If they did, there'd be some fines assessed to the property, and I just don't understand how you can come here and set the standard for this county, but you can't set it for your own property. 107's a big eyesore, and I definitely would think that, you know, that would be something you could work on. I've, I've asked, requested meetings with you. I can't get one. I've asked Michelle Weaver back from August 23rd. I'd like to talk to my District Four rep. I don't want this park at Hidden Valley closed down. I don't want the baseball fields closed, but I would like them to look a certain way. I'd like to look, have houses in the, in the area that, my appraisal on my residential at the same square footage as that property at 107 Flipping Road is more expensive than a commercial property. I just, I just don't understand how that's even feasible. And then, on top of that, DC, we went to DC, spent $8,000. Three commissioners went there, spent big-time money to benefit Henry County. How? How does it benefit me, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Holmes? How? Because I can't get in that club. And if it doesn't take care of all your constituents, we shouldn't go. It'd be the same if somebody wanted to go to a son of anarchy. That would be probably frowned upon, and I would be, I would not support that either. So I would like somebody to answer in, in the public to the Henry County Times, Monroe Rourke wrote a sta, article, he said he can't get a hold of anybody in the county for a comment, and he received no response by press time. Now, the county, everybody knows, they, the commissioners have a budget of $8,000 per person. They can do what they want with it. But it would, should benefit the whole county, not just partial group of county constituents. So if we can help out on that Hidden Valley Park, get some, get some money over there to make that park look nice. I believe the ballgames have started there. They look atrocious. I've asked, I've put it on C Click Fix. I haven't got a response on that. The bathrooms are always locked. When you go there, when you go to Village Park, or Bud Kelly Park, or you go to JP Mosley, bathrooms are open. So why would one park have locked bathrooms during the day? I understand maybe late at night, but should be the same for everybody, and they all should look about the same, if we're all being fair to our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments section. So at this time, the floor is now open for any commissioner comments. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I just want to invite the public out to our Plug-in Expo, which will be September the 28th here in this building, starting at 9:00 in the morning to 2:00 during the day. We're having some of our developers come out who have active and, active developments in the county, or predevelopments in the county, to come out and meet with small business owners who may want to determine how to do business with the county- owners who may want to determine how to do business with the county or how to do business with each other. This is an opportunity for us to build community economics and turn dollars in our community. So if you will come out September the 28th at 9:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM to learn about how to do business with Henry County and how to do business with other developments in the area. It is called a Plug In Expo, come grow your business in a growing Henry County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Barr?
Yes, just wanted to mention, we had a very successful ribbon cutting in Northola Park this past Saturday and I wanted to thank all the staff that came out and helped that process through the morning. And I do have a question for Commissioner Wilson. You said you got the fire department to go up there and get on them zip lines. Did you get on the zip line?
No, sir, I didn't.
Well, the only other thing I'm going to say is I'm glad you learned your lesson when you fell off Atlanta.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, well, we'll now move into the approval of our minutes. We had a June 27th joint meeting with the cities regarding SPOS 5 on that date and then on June 9th, we had a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on July 16th. We had a call BLC meeting regarding the village right in the morning and so what we're doing now is calling for a motion to approve those minutes. Okay, we have a motion, second. Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events on this week at September 20th at 9:00 AM is a call joint meeting with the Henry County Water Authority to be held at the Henry County Water Authority, which is located at 100 West Ridge Industrial Boulevard. On October the 1st, excuse me, on October the 1st at 9:00 AM is our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting. October 15th at 6:30 PM is our regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting and the previous date of November the 7th that we were planning of a call joint meeting with the Henry County Development Authority, that date is going to be changed but will be noted and announced at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, if there's no further due for the board, we call for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you. Everyone have a good night. Thank you.